It's my pleasure to convene the Wednesday, October 19th meeting of the possible county commissioners. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance is through the flag of the United States of America, through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberated and justice for all. Now, please join me in a moment of silence as we think about our service members who are doing an arms' way to serve our interest. Thank you very much. Now, at this time, as is our wont, it is time for public comment. If you have any public comment that you would like to offer. And it's my pleasure to recognize Mary LeClair, a dearly remembered public commissioner.
And I'd like to introduce you to Deanna. Deanna, here's her. We're from HAC today. We're representing HAC today.
Another very worthwhile Cape Cod organization.
Yes, and we're here for something that we do every year. We have a letter that Deanna has, and we would like you to look it over and see if that was sent from the three commissioners, from the governor to lieutenant governor, right straight down to every selectman on the Cape and all our representatives, and where you're telling them to either come to the telethon and participate, send a donation, or do whatever they feel is right, and Deanna will tell you how she needs it done.
I had asked care of if you could have, if you had electronic signatures, but I guess she doesn't, so we would have to have your signature scanned, and then that way, because we have to do a mail merge, and there's 127 of these letters that will be going out, that's one way to do it. The other way is to give you all 127, and you individually sign them?
We did that. You know, we used to do that, Mary. Yeah. It wasn't as fun as that.
But doing a scan on, and then we would, we would put them, we would put them into the letter, and then we would do the mail merge, and we would do the mailing, and we were asking for 150 pieces of letterhead and envelopes, just in case, and we could give back whatever left over is left over. And if you personally wanted to address someone, we would most certainly put that aside, and then you could put a note on it individually if you would like.
Now, if they signed that, would that be sufficient for the scans?
We wouldn't be able to do a scan, because it has to go into a mail merge to...
No, we have to do that. That's something we would have to do.
Right.
Okay, so you would break that out with...
Well, it's either, it's either we can do it, or you know...
Okay, well, I don't think that's a nuts and bolts kind of thing. You pick it out afterwards.
Well, we should look at the letter, approve the letter, and then if you could just...
But at the same time, this looks like exactly the same letter we sign every year. I will leave it up to the other commissioners. And of course, the other part is, you haven't asked me yet, Mary, or us, so we're not supposed to show up for this as well. That's coming?
That's, that's coming. Yes, definitely. This was the nuts and bolts, as you say, Bill, but now, the real ask is that we would like you to attend and go on air for us, or if you wanted to have something beforehand, we would send somebody to you, and it would be merged in with the rest of the telethon, and you could make a statement.
Okay. This time, I'm going to look both ways before I make that turn.
We were going to say that, Bill. Last year, Bill was on his way, and people kept saying, you know, "Bill Dougherty will be here." "Bill Dougherty will be here." Of course he will be here. Anywhere in the car.
Yes, and we were all concerned, we all knew that something was up.
Is there a special host this year for the telethon, like there was last year? We had the Bachelor, remember?
Maybe Santa Claus.
Oh, Santa Claus, my God.
That would bring back old lives.
And maybe Todd, of course, is... Yes, Mandy Todd.
I guess I meant a guest host. Wasn't it Chris Lambert?
Yeah, and Chris will be there.
Chris will be there?
Yeah, he will be here with his family.
There were some, a group of young girls swooning over him when he came in. Remember that?
Yes, definitely.
Anyway.
Thank you very much for...
Oh, listen, wow. First of all, we'll take care of this other part, I think, unless you have some...
Can we leave me a copy? I'll get there on my phone.
At the same time, I will make every effort to get there, even if I have to have Barbara drive to make sure I get there.
And I'll make a motion that we support and sign the letter that we requested.
I will second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to see you, Mary.
A pleasure to see you too.
Can I have the letter for HAC to represent?
Okay, the next thing on our agenda, we have a presentation from Chip Osborne on municipal lawn and turf management to reduce fertilizer pesticide use.
Thank you very much.
And Chip, if you could just sort of identify yourself for the thousands of people who watch us.
Certainly. My name is Chip Osborne. I'll tell you in a minute a little bit about, about my background and sort of what got me to where I am today and what I do. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address you this afternoon. I know that in what we're talking about here, you know, on Cape Cod, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, is an issue that's local here, but it truly is national, and the focus of what I do is around the country. But I welcome the opportunity to speak to a commission like yours that has the influence and, you know, the position that, that you have here and hold on the Cape is one that's important, and this issue is important. So, part of what, you know, I'm doing, I felt that it was really important to begin here, because this is really the, you know, you folks are the ones that sort of set the tone for what happens on the Cape. So, in that respect, I thank you very much for the opportunity to entertain this discussion today. Just a little bit, just briefly about me. What I do is, I have a company called Osborne Organics that is involved in the field of pesticide reduction, elimination, as well as the promotion of alternative strategies. So, those strategies, when we entertain discussions about taking a synthetic product out of the equation to grow grass specifically, we have to put something back in there. So, we can't just take those out of the, out of the puzzle and not put something proactively back in. So, I have developed strategies to make that work. I'm a consultant. I teach the subject of natural turf management nationwide. I'm a lifelong horticulturist, so I've been a professional horticulturist for over 40 years, formerly a big pesticide user. So, I have a greenhouse nursery guidance center, and I bought, mixed, and sprayed probably more pounds of active and really toxic pesticides in the course of my early years of my career than many turf people will, you know, in the course of a lifetime. So, I have firsthand knowledge of that, and I saw some of the negatives that can happen, and certain things happened in my life that gave me, you know, ideas and decisions on how I might move forward differently with alternative methods, both for my own safety as an applicator, but also for the safety of clients that were coming into my business establishment. So, it goes back probably into the mid-1990s, when I made the conscious decision that I needed to move those out of my business environment. I transitioned to a complete non-toxic approach to growing plant material, actually had part of my greenhouse range USDA certified organic, and taught myself organic strategies, because at that time and still now, there was no school that I could go to to learn natural turf management or organics.
Excuse me, could you close the door?
I got it. Everything, you know, currently, back then and still currently, comes from a conventional perspective. And then I shifted my horticultural specialty from ornamental hort into land management, land care, specializing in turf grass, and developing strategies how we can have high-quality grass without the use of synthetic inputs. So, by the time I finish in the next hour, if I make, no other point will be to make the point that natural or organic does not mean weeds, does not mean insect, does not mean disease, and there are ways that we can manage that. I'm also, like you, an elected public official. I've sat for the last 12 years on my local recreation and park commission, currently the chair. I've been the chair for seven or eight of the last 10 or 12 years, so very familiar with the public sector, and all of the work I do is designed to be able to work in the public sector and have, you know, had those 10 or 12 years of, of doing that. And I'll tell you a little bit, I'm from Marblehead, and I'll tell you a little bit about what happened there that led the way for this non-toxic approach. So, the issue that we have in front of us is chemicals used to grow grass. You know, that is really the focus, that we're using chemicals that break down into two different regions or two different classifications, synthetic fertilizers and toxic pesticides. The problem is groundwater contamination, nutrient loading, 12% to 20% comes from those synthetic fertilizers, certainly can come from organic fertilizers if used improperly. Nitrogen is nitrogen, and nitrogen is a problem. It's with those fertilizers from the organic perspective, as I explain them to you, you'll see are, are much less likely when used properly to contribute to this problem. These numbers here are numbers from the Cape, and that depends on the intensity of the management program. So, a low-impact homeowner is very different than, say, a school district that's doing a high-profile stadium football field that generally more nitrogen is used. And then the public health issues, and I will talk a little bit about that, because many of us believe that there are public health issues associated with the use of synthetic pesticides. The solution, adopting synthetic-free, chemical-free land management strategies. One of the things that I will be doing over the next year is going town to town on the Cape here. We just met with some folks in Barnstable, and work towards adoption of local policies and regulations that will go towards protecting groundwater, offshore, and, and public health issues for many years to come. In the public sector, we can self-regulate with adopted policies and regulations, but currently, no public entity can legislate against citizens on their use, because those rights are protected by preemption, which means that you can't trump a state at the local level. But we look for the public sector to lead by example and saying, "We're doing this on our lands. Here's what we would like you to do and follow suit, and do it on yours as well." The outcome, groundwater is protected, nutrient loading is reduced, and then public health is preserved for the future. One of my favorite quotes from Sir Alvin Howard, who is widely credited as being the father of organics, is pesticides are the badge of the amateur. And I know that. It was so easy for me to run my business with pesticides. I can do anything that you want me to, just like that. If I fall to a synthetic pesticide, I have to think a little bit more if I want to not use that tool, but there are ways that we can do it. So, it's a matter of reeducating and rethinking and, you know, and not taking the amateur, but becoming true professionals in how we do it. Of course, every homeowner is not going to be a professional, but it's up to those of us that are professionals to help develop strategies that they can simply follow. And pests are by profession. So, when I go into a turf system and I see certain weeds, I can tell you pretty much what's going on in that turf system by what I see there, because something is happening in that soil, something is happening in that environment that is favoring the weeds and making it difficult for that grass to thrive. When we change soils, it doesn't have to be a lot of money, it just is a certain attention to detail, we can create environments that more favorably treat grass as opposed to the weed pressures. Natural approach can produce high-quality plant material. The absence of synthetics, and this is everything you see, every picture you see here is going to be 100% organic and has been for 10 years. Sunflowers, late in the season, not chewed up with insects, because this particular horticultural system encourages beneficial insects to come in, and the good guys take care of the bad guys, so we can look at a pristine sunflower, you know, late in the season, close to harvest. Some pictures of organic lawns. If I, you know, it doesn't be, it doesn't do as much good if I talk for an hour and you don't see that. Yes, you know, we can have it in very different systems. The Lee Mansion, historic 1720, 1730 sea captain's mansion in downtown Marblehead, been organic for 10 years. An estate property down in Greenwich, Connecticut, so big areas, small areas. American homeowners account for the largest amount of toxic pesticides used in the country, so American homeowners are part of the problem. But as in the municipal and the public sector, we can lead by example of the protection of Cape Cod. So, the goal is to get everybody out there to begin to think responsibly about the types of materials that they use. At this point in time, it doesn't really matter, all of us in the room here, whether we agree or disagree about the use of synthetics. Bottom line, the fact is that homeowners, parents, citizens are all beginning to request and look at alternative strategies. So, we're undergoing a market change, and now is the time to really begin to aggressively address this issue. The world of organic lawn care and natural turf management is no longer out there on the fringe. It has come full mainstream, absolutely does not command anywhere part of the share of the market, maybe takes 3% of the, of the land care, lawn care market at this point, but mainstream. It's no more just, you know, fringe discussions. These are the reasons why we come to this issue, very different reasons. And years and years ago, when I started this, and when Green Cape started, all this was very fragmented, and people came at the issue for their own certain particular reasons. Now, there's a tremendous galvanization between all of these groups with the same goal, you know, pesticide reduction leading towards elimination and learning how to manage landscapes without the use of these inputs. We talk about the dose makes the poison, science and medicine, new research, and risk assessment. How often, you know, does that see? We have an applicator here with boots and, and a mask and gloves, and is spraying along. I'm going to read you something that I wrote and referenced, only because I want to keep it short and concise, because I know I only have an hour here. Most of the time when I entertain these discussions, I have a couple of hours, and I can go off track and, and talk off the cuff, but I just wanted to read this, because this really tells where we're coming from and why we're doing this. For me personally, I didn't wake up this morning and think organic lawns would be a great thing to do. There's a reason that we do it. The United States Environmental Protection Agency regulates the commercial availability and the use of pesticides with a goal of protecting public health and the environment. However, regulatory decisions are based on risk assessment and a balancing of costs with benefits, and are not adequate to prevent all harm from pesticides. There is no cost-benefit addressed for negative impact on human health and the environment. EPA regulation has often proved insufficient, evidenced by the frequency with pesticides and specific pesticide uses previously approved by the EPA have subsequently been withdrawn from the market or been restricted due to unanticipated health and environmental impact. Pesticide regulation is also limited in that toxicity testing is most often performed on the active ingredient only, rather than the formulated product that includes inert ingredients, cumulative effects from repeat exposure from multiple sources, and synergistic interactions with other pesticides, pollutants, and pharmaceuticals. Many compounds are not fully considered, inadequate data are available for evaluating neurological and endocrine-disrupting effects, low-level exposures are not fully evaluated, and pesticide impacts on health and the environment are not adequately tracked, analyzed, and reported. Pesticide use has resulted in widespread contamination of natural resources. In 2006, the U.S. Geological Survey reported results of the National Water Quality Assessment Program and indicated that during 1992 to 2001 study period, at least one pesticide was found in all streams studied. Multiple pesticides were detected in 97% of streams in both agricultural and urban watersheds, and above levels of concern in 87% at urban monitoring sites. Pesticides were also detected in 100% of fish sampled and in 33% of major aquifer samples. In 2003, the Center for Disease Control reported an average of 91 chemical contaminants in fluid and tissue samples from adults in the United States, including 17 pesticides or pesticide breakdown products. So, it's that kind of information that those of us that believe it's an issue is out there, and that's why we see concern. Risk assessment by the EPA tells how much is it okay for me to be exposed to as a 150-pound male. It doesn't necessarily take into consideration the physiology and what a woman can tolerate, a pregnant woman, nor an infant, a child, or a toddler. So, it's those types of concerns that, that we face. After that spray application, we see that, and then you see that, because we're told that as soon as it's dried to the touch, it's okay to go back on there. So, that is what becomes problematic when a product that goes down there. If we purchase a bag of weed and feed tomorrow in a four-step program, the weed is 24D, 50% of age and orange. So, that is still going down in our backyards, and kids are on there 24 to 48 hours after. Of 30 commonly-used pesticides, 19 are likely or probable carcinogens, 13 linked to birth defects, 21 reproductive toxicants, 28 kidney or liver damage, 27 sensitizers or irritants, 16 are toxic to birds, 24 to fish, 11 to bees, 17 groundwater contaminants, and 23 can leach through soil. I always show this, because as, as in the Cape, I always sort of joke when I'm around the country, that people think Cape Cod is its own state. They don't think you're part of Massachusetts. They think you're your own thing because of your gorgeous...
And so does the legislation.
Yeah, we do too.
And that's what, so people around the country are looking to Cape Cod. How are they going to wrestle with this in that pristine, that gorgeous environment? This is Marblehead, Highland, so this is where I grew up, and like, you know, we go back, so we think it's pretty nice too, but the Cape is really unique and really special. When we talk about why going organic, these are the questions that come up. What is a pesticide? Isn't there legislation? Well, we've talked a little bit about the legislation. Pesticide is a sensitive poison. It's designed to kill, repel, or mitigate something. Health risks, unique vulnerability of children, environmental, and how can we reduce and eliminate? Things are happening now at the federal level, so this isn't just a Cape Cod issue. This isn't just a local issue. We're looking at pesticide reregistration issues, disclosure of inert ingredients. Keeping in mind that when you have a pesticide, the active ingredient's only 2% or 3%. 97, 98% is an inert ingredient, never tested. We don't even know what they are. Those inerts are protected by trade secret laws, proprietary business information. So, 97%, that bottle has never undergone testing. Now, when you have a product that happens, when we're doing, say, big weed control, and you take product A and product B, and you put them together in a formulation, no one has ever tested that formulation as it pours out of the bottle. All that was tested was the 2% of product A and 2% of product B independently. Now, you put it together with the synergistic, never been tested. State levels, Connecticut's got legislation, New York's got legislation, Oregon has some, New Jersey is pending and looks like it's going to pass. I've been involved in all of these states in working through and, you know, these types of legislations. I worked out in Boulder, Colorado. I've been looking at developing organic management strategies for all, every public park, all the, all the public parks manage turf grass in the city of Boulder. I was in Highland Park, Illinois, the other night, same thing, organic policy is in place and trying to work through it. So, this issue, Cleveland, Cuyahoga County, where Cleveland is, is adopting at the county level pesticide restrictions countywide, including the city of Cleveland, for all county-owned land. And then local government initiatives, and that's sort of where we're focusing here on the Cape. Town of Marblehead, our Board of Health declared pesticides a public health issue in 2000, and then it was drafted, I was a co-author, and drafted an organic pest management policy, which was adopted in 2001 and strengthened to regulation in 2005. This was the first policy in the United States that prohibited the use of pesticides, but mandated natural methods of control. There was one policy that predated us in 1995 that banned pesticides, but didn't mandate, you know, a natural approach. So, then all of a sudden, things went from bad to worse, because they put no proactive strategies in place. So, this has become the model, you know, for around the country, and, you know, for that proactive management, and Green Cape and I are working to take this policy and tweak it, and then offer it, you know, here as something that is very specific, that will address those unique needs that you have here on the Cape that are different from other parts of the country. How we did it in Marblehead, we built partnerships with youth sports groups and, and school districts. We worked through the politics, political issue. People line up on both sides of it. We got through that, we got beyond that. People now will say that the athletic fields in Marblehead have never looked better. They have improved over 10 years. I can take you to 15, 18 acres of sports fields, and you will find less than 2% weed pressures. So, weeds are not an issue. They are not part of the problem. We developed sound chemical-free field management plan, again, all organic, and I approached the finance. I had to do the budget, preliminary budget, dealing with less money and more land now than I was 10 years ago, and the fact that when we embark on an organic program at the five-year point, we can show cost reductions for material inputs, labor inputs, and water being used as a, as a resource to grow the grass. Quickly, the history of conventional turf management. World War II era, first synthetic fertilizers were bombs, ammonium nitrate, the pesticides, second and third generation, nerve gases, chemical warfare, research. Products were marketed to agriculture with improved, increased yields per acre guaranteed. That happened. Now, there's less yields per acre because of all the soil damage. If it weren't for GMOs and, and modifying these plants with, with other genes, yields per acre would be, be so low that, you know, we wouldn't be able to deal with it. Prior to the use of chemicals, the United States lost 14% of its ag crops to pesticide, to insect weeds and disease. Today, we lose 17% because of the widespread resistance to all of these chemicals. Late 1950s, 1960s, the homeowner lawn began to be developed. So, these companies that marketed this to ag then wanted to expand their market, so they came to us as homeowners. We can actually trace the beginning of the lawn care industry from the homeowner perspective to a Sunday afternoon in 1967 in April, when the Masters Golf Tournament was shown on TV for the first time. And all the men in the audience, because grass is absolutely a guy thing, you know, would say, "I want my lawn to look like that." And there was an industry poised to deliver it very quickly. But it's important to note that at Augusta National, not one human being, except for maintenance personnel, steps foot on that golf course for four months before the event. That's why it looks so pristine, not necessarily the product side. So, now that we've brought pesticides in, all of the grasses that we grow in this region of the country, the whole United States, but the northern region of the country, all the grasses are native to Western Europe and the British Isles, southern regions, Africa and Asia. So, we have a non-native species that we're growing, but now an industry has told us to grow it as a monoculture, so in their own environments. It was never intended to grow as a monoculture. So, this whole thing was designed to sell product. So, what we're dealing with today and how we grow grass fundamentally began back in the 50s as how can we sell more products? Not how can we grow good grass, how can we move product? How did this quickly become mainstream? Fertilizer and chemical companies began funding research at land grants, universities all around the country, to substantiate the efficacy of how these products work. That information then very quickly moved to the classroom from the field trials. Students learned to grow grass using these products and methods, and then students moved to the marketplace and then purchased these products from the chemical companies. And that was the development of the conventional lawn care product-based system. You still can't go to any of these land grants today and get training in alternative methods, because this is the program. I actually had a major Midwestern university approach me and say, "We were funded by a grant from the EPA to rewrite our website to include organics. Can you help us?" None of us here know how to do that. So, here we are in 2011, and that still is the model in place, you know, pretty much dominated by an industry. This approach is now the norm. It's acceptable to use poisons and contaminants to grow grass. How many homeowners do you think would buy weed and feed if it was called what it really is, fertilizer and poison? Not a whole lot, very clever marketing. Synthetic consumer products are highly water soluble, they're not slow released, and a four-step program isn't even what's called integrated pest management, because the ads come on every June and say, "Time for lawn insect control. Put it down, you're going to kill all those bugs in your lawn, and nothing will ever hurt it." There's only three bugs in this part of the United States that could possibly damage your lawn. Chances are, you don't even have them. But there's a company telling you to buy a bag for $49.95 to kill it all, whether you have it or not, and what happens is, most of the beneficial life in that lawn is killed, and you've actually poisoned it for a 60, 70-day period, all designed for product sales that equate to revenue. Municipalities, public sector generally follow conventional guidelines. Alternatives are not presented by the industry or educational institutions. For the most part, they say it can't be done. I'm told that all the time. I was in Illinois the other night, and our university submitted a letter and said it can't be done. You can't do it unless you do it this way. So, you know, what we're all about is showing that, yes, we can do it, it's just different strategies. The difference between the two programs, conventional turf management, synthetic fertilizers, chemical, chemical pesticides, quick fix, things happen very, very quickly. You can do things very fast, change things very quickly. It's a product-centered approach, so keep in mind, there's a product for everything. Fertility, insect, weeds, and disease, you just reach for product to, to, to do that. Many times prophylactic use, but those products treat symptoms. So, if you are reaching for a bag of pre-emergent crabgrass control, you're treating a symptom, because that crabgrass is a symptom that something's wrong. What's wrong in that turf system is a bare spot the size of a silver dollar or greater, or there is thin turf, minimal turf density, meaning how many grass plants are growing in a square foot. You can get, you know, several hundred grass plants growing in a square foot, but if you only have, you know, half of that, you, you will... you will get crabgrass. So we're using a product every April on a pre-emergent basis to treat that symptom. Just what an industry wants us to do. It's revenue. Every April, they get revenue. They have no interest in us solving the problem. Applications are based on calendar dates rather than on need of the turf system and lots of preventative, like that season-long grub control. So you don't really know if you have a grub problem, but you can put a product down early in the season just to make sure that you don't. So that's, I mean, that flies in the face of good judgment in any agricultural perspective. Natural turf management, natural organic product. Soil testing is the basis for everything that we do. So that separates us from conventional. So if we were doing, say, a school district with eight or ten or twelve or fifteen sports fields, we would test every single one. And I can guarantee you to all of my work that we're probably not going to find the same set of conditions replicated over all twelve. So we're beginning more site-specific as opposed to cookie cutter. Cookie cutter means that in most of the cool season regions of the country, the same program with relatively the same products are done at the same time of year to grow the same type of grass. We're looking at individual systems and saying, what does this system need? How can we best address this to keep inputs to a minimum and get high quality? We don't treat symptoms. We solve problems. Crabgrass model, my weed killer is going to be a good bag of grass seed because I know that if I improve turf density and fill bare spots, I can make crabgrass go away. I won't make it go away in the thirty days that the synthetics will, but I can make it go away over a twenty-four-month period, eighteen to twenty-four months. I can rid that turf system of crabgrass. The objective is to create and establish a healthy soil. And as opposed to the product approach, we are following what is called a systems approach. And I'll explain that in detail. Fertilizers, the difference. Very important. This is a key piece of the puzzle here on the Cape. Traditional fertilizers, part of the problem. Conventional is generally urea, synthetic and organic, highly water soluble, fast release, fast grain up, rapid uptake. It can be encapsulated to slow down the release of nitrogen. It directly feeds the plant. Secondary reactions to even slow the release down more. Multiple apps leaves the soil as fast as it gets in if it's water soluble. It used to be expensive, but now it is more so. Natural organics. The nitrogen is plant, meaning a grain, or animal byproduct-based. So our nitrogen sources are organic as opposed to inorganic. Water insoluble nitrogen, slow release, broken down by microbial action, feeding the soil, not the plant. Sustained benefit, organic nitrogen, measured growth and becoming more and more cost-effective. Nutrients from a fertilizer bag do not provide energy needed for growth. They are not plant food. We've been taught that you buy a bag of fertilizer and it's plant food. There's nothing in that bag that resembles plant food. They're simply raw materials that mix with sun, water, carbon dioxide that enable the grass plant to produce carbohydrates necessary for growth. And that all happens in photosynthesis. So that bag of fertilizer is just a catalyst to facilitate photosynthesis. Chlorophyll, sun, CO2 and moisture. And carbohydrates are produced and that's plant food. Nitrogen. Plants can only use inorganic. That's why we went to a laboratory seventy-five years ago and developed the inorganic. That's why synthetics work so fast, forty-eight hours. In the natural system, it's microbes that convert organic nitrogen to this inorganic so that it becomes plant available. Organic forms of nitrogen that plant or that animal byproduct is first mineralized. So there are bacterial organisms that use it as a food source. They mineralize it and they convert it to ammonium nitrogen, N H four plus. And that is held on to in the soil for long periods of time on cation exchange sites. Plus nutrients are held in the bodies of the organism. Then some of it is converted to NO three minus, nitrate nitrogen by nitrifying bacteria. And that is the soluble nitrogen. The four-step fertilizers are all nitrate, all soluble. So that's the ones that leave so fast. So we're creating retained nitrogen and a little bit of soluble, knowing that grass as a crop likes fifty-fifty, equal amounts of both. But the industry and the four-step program is giving us one hundred percent of that. So it's really not the best thing for the grass. Following a soluble application of nitrogen to turf, the growth increases sharply two days after application. Peak growth rate, seven to ten days after application, tapers off to original growth rate in four to six weeks, creates peaks and valleys of fertilization, quote, rate from UMass Cooperative Extension website. That's the way synthetic soluble products work. Under this model, the estimate, not just by me, but by the EPA, is that thirty-five percent of the applied nitrogen benefits the grass. Sixty-five percent goes to runoff or groundwater contamination because it's being released so fast in ten days that the grass pig's out on it, but can't use it up as fast as it becomes available. So that's what happens when we're talking about nutrient pollution and nutrient loading under this type of a model. That type of fertilizer is urea. It's important to note that it takes five ton of petroleum to make one ton of that fertilizer. Synthetic fertilizer is responsible for twenty percent of all the oil consumed in the United States today. So one-fifth of our oil consumption goes into making this fertilizer. This is just the description of urea. Hundred percent water soluble. It's not made here in this country. It's brought in as an import and then formulated to fertilizers here. But this is basically anhydrous ammonia reacted under heat and pressure to form fertilizer. Sulfur-coated ureas, the way they slow it down. They wrap those little prills or those little pellets in sulfur because then the moisture has to eat away the sulfur and then can dissolve the urea. Relatively imperfect. This is again, UMass language. An imperfect coating with cracks are the least uniform of any slow-release product. So it's an imperfect process that slows it down a little, but not a lot. Then there are synthetic slow-release fertilizers, urea formaldehyde fertilizers that make a product called methylene urea, taking urea and reacting it with formaldehyde. And methylene urea is a slow-release product that needs soil microorganisms to break down, just like the organic stuff. There's some loss of end through leaching, but this does nothing to contribute to the health of the organisms or the health of the biomass. Organic fertilizers contribute to health of the biomass. Formaldehyde. This is from the MSDS sheet, MSDS Material Safety Data Sheet on every chemical that's out there. Causes burns, toxic by inhalation, ingestion, through skin absorption, readily absorbed through skin, probable carcinogen, mutagen, damage to kidneys, allergic reaction, sensitization, genetic damage, on and on and on. So that's now what we're mixing with the soluble urea to slow the rate down. So is that really what you want to put down in the soil? Is a material that, you know, has that kind of a thing? Sound fertilizer programs, low uniform supply of nitrogen. Goal is to build up reserve. Cut fertilizer applications, hold more of it in the soil and in the biomass and keep it there to draw on as a long-term nitrogen source rather than this sort of quick-fix type of a thing. And this is exactly what organic fertilizers do. On the Cape, the sensitive issues that you have here. You know, sole-source aquifer. The drinking supply for Cape residents is supplied almost entirely from an aquifer that underlies your surface here. You know, with the exception of the outer Cape where it's more, you know, well. Sandy soils often have low organic content. Groundwater can be ten feet below the surface or closer. Groundwater travels at a foot per day. So these chemicals could easily contaminate supplies in nearby private drinking water wells. And then, of course, the marine environment. We don't have to elaborate on that. We all know how sensitive that is. You know, I'm out in Martha's Vineyard. I'm over on Nantucket. Some of the scallop beds off Nantucket are just shot because of all this synthetic runoff down there offshore. And they're looking actually, they're having a discussion over there that maybe we should try to kick preemption back so we can self-regulate these fertilizers over there because livelihoods are being ruined. How do we do it? So how do we do it? How do we grow grass without, you know, these products? I call it a systems approach to natural turf management. It's a three-fold concept. So rather than coming at it from a product-centered approach that the industry has put forth, we're bringing three distinct concepts together in a well-thought-out plan. A basic understanding of soil biology. We all just go right back to high school biology when we were taught at some point, a handful of soil contains billions of living organisms that nature put there for the sole purpose of growing something. And we work with those organisms. All of those synthetic products, other than that methylene urea, organisms play no part in any of that. So all of those products bypass that fundamental, you know, nutritional model that nature put in place. So when you go out and look at a forest, nobody fertilizes it, but it's always pristine because there's a natural mechanism in place. So we're bringing that back. We are using natural organic products. We call inputs. And that is based on soil testing. We put down only what we need when we need it and very sound and specific cultural practices, things like mowing and irrigation and thatch management and aeration for the relief of compaction. Once all of that is thoughtfully brought together into a program, it's that approach that replaces when we have an absence of synthetics. So those of us in the public sector, turf managers, we need to be aware that things are changing and that we now do have viable alternatives out there. The basics, when we start to design these programs, when I teach the subject, whether I'm teaching a homeowner, whether I'm teaching a municipality or a landscape contractor, we're looking at soil testing. We're acknowledging soil biology. We're using compost teas, which are now a liquid extract of high-grade compost that have the ability to make such a positive benefit on soil organisms that it's a no-nitrogen material. Nitrogen analysis of compost tea is zero. But because it influences the organisms and what happens when the organisms are down there, they all contain carbon and nitrogen. So if I have a single-cell bacteria that has five units of carbon, one unit of nitrogen, and it is consumed by a higher-level predator like a protozoa, that protozoa assumes that C and that N, but it doesn't need it for its own survival. And the nitrogen is immediately sloughed off and it goes right into that soil environment in a plant-available form and goes right into the grass. So we now have the ability to take a zero-nitrogen-analysis material and make a huge positive benefit in the areas of nitrogen in that soil environment. Bringing in compost, not just for the guidance, but now using it in grass. Non-manure-based compost. Manure-based composts are high in phosphorus. We don't want more phosphorus out there. Grass doesn't need phosphorus. So we try to keep it out. Only when you're seeding, that initial root development. For the most part, phosphorus should be eliminated from any lawn care fertilizer, especially here on the Cape. Uses of natural organic fertilizers, aggressive seeding and overseeding. As I said, bang, grass seed is my weed killer of choice. Aeration, tothatching, mowing and irrigation strategies. Many of these are not addressed by the conventional industry. So we're coming again with alternative strategies that are sort of outside of the realm of what currently is being done. It's about the soil. We're taking a feed-the-soil approach as opposed to a feed-the-plant approach. Soils are our number-one goal. Soils are our number-one goal. Every project I'm on, everything I teach, it all starts with the soil. There's some people that will say that dirt's dirt, soil's soil. What's the big deal? It's all the same. It's not all the same. It's very, very different. And soil is fundamentally at the base of what it takes to grow anything on a healthy system. So we're doing complete soil test panels, nutrient, textural, bioassay. There's tests out there now at my disposal that will tell me what's living in that football field. I can tell you how many organisms are living, what kind they're out there, and what I need to tweak to make that right for turf grass and discourage weeds. So together, this type of information gives us a clear picture moving forward. Just to give you an idea, this is what we're talking about. But I think the most dramatic thing in a healthy soil is that in this teaspoon, you can have the reproductive hyphal strand of the fungi nine feet long wrapped around here at the microscopic level. So it's that kind of information that's leading, you know, organic agriculture to no tilling. The days of tilling and tilling and tilling are going away because it just damages all of this. But big, big numbers of organisms that we're dealing with. Conventional view of soil, soil structure, sand, silt, and clay, soil chemistry, pH, organic matter, NPK, and the biological, as three separate entities. This isn't my slide. This was given to me by Penn State. So Chip Osborne didn't make up this. This is where more forward-thinking, you know, are looking at it. And this is now the emerging view of soil health. But this soil is all interrelated. And the key that's right here that pulls it all together and makes a healthy soil is the humus portion of the soil. So we're addressing things now. Instead of a nitrogen-based fertilizer, we're putting down an application of a humic acid or something that is addressing humus to tie this thing all together because we know that this is all related. It's not just separate areas. So managing lawns and turf is about reducing and eliminating stress. The goal is to reduce inputs over time, always try to move towards and achieve a sustainable situation, and take advantage of nutrient cycling when we get those organisms as healthy as possible. And we're there at Marblehead. To give you an idea, when we started the organic program 10 years ago, Mother Nature, through the biomass, was generating 85 pounds of nitrogen per acre of topsoil. That's, you know, that's about two pounds, a little less than two pounds, about a pound and a half, you know, then now we're generating between two and 250 pounds of nitrogen. No fertilizer at all, just that healthy organism. And that's called nutrient cycling, where the system is working. And that model has allowed us to reduce, this year, we will be able to reduce our fertilizer budget by $12,000 because we have built the soils to the point that Mother Nature is now giving us what we need and all we have to do is tweak it. These are the cultural practices. I won't go into them, but mowing, irrigation, aeration-to-thatching, seeding and overseeding. And it's those that we put together in well-thought-out programs to complement, you know, the product-side input. And there is a transition period. When we change from a conventional approach, or no approach, into a natural approach, we have this transition period. And it varies, and it's a direct relationship to the intensity of past management practices from the conventional perspective and the overall quality of the turf system as we see at the beginning of transition. And it's different. Average, you know, you're probably looking at two years to transition a homeowner lawn and maybe three-plus, maybe into the fourth year to fully transitional, you know, transition high-use athletic fields. So we're very honest with those assessments upfront. By following a good natural turf management strategy, quality grass can be grown that meets expectations and keeps chemicals out of the environment. Again, baseball outfield doubles as a field hockey field right now, you know, all organic. We always have to take expectations into account. As I said, organic does not mean a lot of weeds. We are addressing expectations. One thing that's a given in either a conventional program or a natural program, low level of inputs equals certainly a low cost, but it only yields low expectations. A higher level of inputs translates to a higher cost, and that yields a higher expectation. So we haven't developed just one organic program. In my work, I've actually developed four to meet four levels of expectations. So if I'm dealing with that high-profile property, and I'll show you one in a minute, it could be a stadium field, it could be a diverse situation, I'm going to come through with a higher level of management. It's going to cost more money. If I'm dealing with a public neighborhood park that doesn't have a footprint of an athletic field in there, I don't have to come at it with all the great guns. I'm going to develop a lower level of input onto that to meet the site objectives and the site expectations. So there's a wide range of flexibility when we're talking in the public sector on how we want to deal with this. Martha's Vineyard, this is a transitional property that I'm into the second year of transition over there. A lot of issues have arisen in the last 60 years as I've, you know, laid out there, sort of wrapping things, you know, up and tying it all together now. And if we continue, you know, I like to say, if we continue on this path that we've been on the last 60 years, what's the impact going to be on the Cape for the next seven generations? How long can we go dumping nitrogen into groundwater, dumping it offshore, letting it leach offshore, and have a sustainable environment to live and protect our groundwater? And then you bring the human health perspective into it. And there is no, you know, I didn't want to focus on pesticides that much today and on the human health impact, but there is no shortage of science and medicine. And you have to keep in mind that a lot of these pesticides that have been registered several years ago are operating on old science, when they were looking at acute oral or dermal exposures, not low dose. And what science shows now is that it's that two-year-old that's exposed to weed and seed in the backyard at a dilute dose, and then goes out for the next 12 years and is exposed to repeated applications on sports fields that can cause issues. We're seeing, you know, endocrine issues. You're seeing, you know, girls now with, you know, premature puberty at five, six, seven years old. Doesn't happen to everybody. But what's an acceptable number? One in 10, one in 100, one in 500? You know, if one in 100 have an adverse reaction to asthma or ADD or ADHD, in my mind, that's not acceptable when we have alternative strategies that we know are now affected. Again, you know, again, these are Marblehead pictures here, you know, all organic. Another Marblehead field, this is a softball field, field hockey field. You know, I was just on this last week and I had people up from Washington that were looking at organic fields, and I took them on there, they were just absolutely blown away. Could not believe that this hadn't had herbicide on there. That's that same field. This is about, this was the, that was taken about four, five years ago. That was taken on the 25th of August of this summer. No fertilizer. This was before the fall low-dose fertilizer application. Same field there, no fertilizer, hadn't had any fertilizer. We do all low-dose fertility. It got two low-dose applications, one the end of April, one the middle of June, nothing all summer long. And this is the way it looked at the end of August. You know, that's it. In a close-up. This is a horse pasture, you know, another one of my new specialties that I kind of walked into by accident because a client wanted to have organic grass for horses and conventional approaches had failed. So we came in and this is a, this was a pasture that is now 15 months old that we created from scratch out of the woods in New Hampshire. It's 100% organic from day one. And it's all, this is a picture that has had no, had had no nitrogen applied to it, you know, for like 10 months at the time of this picture. But it was all about creating a good soil to begin with, using compost, addressing things upfront that allowed us to do that. A U.S. National Park. I'm working now with the, you know, the National Park Service as a volunteer, volunteering my services because there's an interest of even trying to come up with some models at that level. How can we become more sustainable in the way we manage lands and land care? This happens to be a presidential gravesite that is in, you know, that is beginning the transition into a natural management plan. This slide here, I showed, I addressed the sports turf managers of the United States a few years ago, and they put me in a room with 175 chemical applicators. And it was a National Football League, it was Major League Baseball, it was colleges and universities and local, you know, and local park superintendents. And I showed them this slide. And I asked them, I said, "With what you know about 24D and some of these other chemicals and what your training has taught you and the fact that you go out there with gloves and in some cases a respirator and boot to make that application, what would your comfort level be if that was your daughter and her water bottle and her face in that grass 48 hours after you had put down 50% of Agent Orange?" And their jaws dropped because their conventional training had never allowed them to make that correlation between what they were doing as accepted turf grass management practices and what a potential outcome could be. So that for those people, when you all of a sudden you're talking to daughter, one in 100 wasn't acceptable because, you know, you could potentially have issues. And, you know, I usually close most of my presentations with this slide because it is all about the kids and it is about the long-term impact and what we can leave. And it's just now we are at that stage of what are we going to leave for our legacy? Are we going to leave a legacy of toxins and, you know, and nitrogen sources that are known to pollute? Or are we going to collectively decide that we want to do something about this? So, you know, as I say, the end result here is, you know, as I say, I work around the country, but because I'm lifelong from Massachusetts and because the Cape has always had a special place in my heart and, you know, and Sue and Steve, you know, and I have, you know, some common, you know, common history and, you know, and have worked together, that I think this area down here is so sensitive that it's worth looking at, trying to make a change. So that's why, you know, we have decided to, you know, ask to be, you know, introduced and talk at, you know, each of the individual towns, but because I do feel it's that important. But out of, you know, I was very, you know, when Sue and I and Steve were talking about this, I really wanted to come to you folks first because I respect the position that you're in and I know that you are, I know that you're not, you know, managing lots of land so that you don't have land management other than maybe the grounds here, you know, under your belt, but that a, you know, a sort of a nod of support, you know, from you towards this greater goal of going to the individual towns to get them to adopt local policy. I think that you're in a position that, you know, with that kind of a, sort of a blessing could help make a huge difference for the Cape and for generations to come. So that's sort of it. Thank you.
Chip, first of all, let me say how much I appreciate, and I speak, I think I speak to both, all three of us, that it is very important that this be out there. And you now memorialize your presentation because it does go onto our web, access through our webpage so that the whole Cape can have an opportunity to see it. But at the same time, I see a lot of people here that might have some specific questions to, you know, to ask.
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
I think we should open it up for the people that are here to ask those questions.
Okay. We'll go that way first because I have some myself.
Sure. Why don't we let the public, let they ask? Anybody? They've either been so overwhelmed by the presentation.
A lot of information in 55 minutes, yeah.
So now we'll turn over.
Well, as you know, a lot of this came about because of NSTAR was spraying on our rights of way. And these are things that have often, I mean, common sense kind of tells you these things when I, before I lived permanently on the Cape, I lived in Maryland, we had a lawn. We had, you know, Maryland is all lawn. And I never liked the fact that if we had our, the person who helped us maintain our garden, when he was, if there was ever pesticide application, I never felt comfortable with that. I remember my dog being out, I would wipe my dog down, coming, you know, these types of things. So I was always sort of conscious of this. And, you know, since that's, you know, over 10 years ago, organics have come more and more into it, and you see these alternatives, although not everyone knows how to use them. Our problem, so when all the NSTAR issue came up, it was really, you know, this, this one group trying to explain what they were doing and everyone kind of, you know, saying that doesn't have to be the way, and no one really listening to each other, it felt like to me. But it also got me to the overall picture because if NSTAR is doing this, we're all doing it, and there is a problem here. And that is where I applaud Green Cape because it heightened the awareness that this is not just an NSTAR problem. And preliminary studies that we got from the Department of Agriculture really showed that 50% of harmful chemicals being put into our lawns and our vegetation was really from the homeowner. So that education is vitally important. However, I think that there's always been, there's no difference in the goal and there's no difference in seeing the problem. I think the difference between, you know, some activists and where we are as a role of government is that you, if you can get NSTAR to stop, then you'll bring the awareness to the homeowner. I think that just the whole discussion has brought the awareness heightened. And since you even said yourself, there are preemptions from either state or federal governments, we, there was no way we could stop NSTAR. We still cannot stop NSTAR because they do have a federal preemption and a state preemption. So our, our goal now is that we are doing a comprehensive, the commission has just approved this money for this study and it's going forward, to have an assessment of everyone's contribution, municipalities, commercial entities, the homeowner, the utilities, and even, you know, the National Seashore. With that, we can maybe, we could, what our goal is, and Patty can jump in here and help me because she's with our Cape Cod Commission, which is our regulatory agency, we can set best practices, we can set standards, we can also then maybe even direct people to where they can get this information, such as someone as yourself. That still doesn't, and then with that standard being held, then we can hold someone to a standard that we're holding everyone else to. We can't just say to NSTAR, "You can't do this, but everybody else is doing it, but you're the big bad guy." So our goal is to come at it by setting an example, as you say, and by having so many people buy into that, into change their own practices, that they'll have to, they'll have to be an acquiescence of being that participant and neighbor on the Cape and that they will have to, they will be forced into this. So that is the, that is the strategies here. And Patty, you were just raising your hand.
Sure.
If you want to just jump in on this.
Do you have a question?
No. Well, my question was, in the town of Marblehead, you have rights of way and you have entities that have utilities that have preemption. What have you been able to?
We haven't, we don't have a public utility. We have our own, you know, it's all private utilities. And when we have to manage, we manage it mechanically. It's mechanical management. It's acknowledged that it takes more time. It's acknowledged that there is some, you know, amount of, you know, it's not as inexpensive maybe, but the commitment has been to a manual control when anything has ever had to be managed for the last 10 years in any of the public sectors.
And one other question I have, in, we had a sort of an ad hoc committee just investigating and really just looking, what, for me, it was really an education as to what is, what are the regulations NSTAR is held to and what can they do and what can't they do in entities like it? We had a gentleman named Tim Simmons, you might have come across him from the National Resources, and he is the one that helped NSTAR in that department, helped them develop their vegetation management program because they were feeling that they're, you know, they're cutting and their mechanical management was hurting endangered species, endangered wildlife, just by going in there and blasting things. So the more responsible way, and what they felt was the most environmentally responsible was to, yeah, I, from how I understand it, is the first, the first year, they would do cutting, then they would be spraying and spraying, and with the idea of reducing that spraying down to where it was practically nil and allowing the natural vegetation to come in so that you're, you're not doing this. The National Seashore practice is following that same practice because it is the most environmentally responsible to date. He gave an example of how he tries to use no pesticides. And there was an area where he had a phragmide infestation that was hurting on an estuary, a sensitive estuary. He had to resort after many trials and tribulations of trying other alternatives to use pesticides on this particular area to get rid of these phragmites. What are your feelings on that? Is there, is there also, is there an opportunity? You're talking about turf management. I'm talking about out in the wilds.
Yeah, I was this focused on turf, but I knew all aspects.
So how, how do you, how do you feel about that? And this is somebody who actually feels very much the way you do philosophically.
The, well, for the phragmites issue, you know, there's, there's a lot of research done now that, you know, manual cutting, repeated cutting will bring it under control. When we acknowledge that phragmites is an opportunistic, it's, it's an opportunistic grass that comes in in areas where human intervention has had an impact. So in a pristine, non-intervened environment, you're not going to get phragmites of any great pressure. But in areas where things have been disturbed or there's some negative impact, you will get it. Spraying is probably the least effective way. If somebody does choose to, you know, treat it with a chemical, the phragmites should be cut and then the chemical brushed on that open wound in very, very low doses, but never should blanket spray. So that's, you know, that, that, so there's differences of opinion on how to manage, you know, one works faster, one takes longer stretch. We're wrestling with that issue in Marblehead. We have our marshes and, you know, the phragmites for us comes from residents that back up to the marsh, and they've been using for step fertilizer all these years. The nitrogen goes into the marsh and creates this unnatural situation, and now the opportunistic species has been able to take over. Or roadside where, you know, you know, street sweepings and oils and greases have dripped into the marsh over 30, 40, 50 years, and then you have that. So, you know, that, that's part of that, that issue. But, you know, phragmites, there's a lot of research being done on how to control it, you know, naturally. You know, as far as the, you know, the NSTAR issue, I haven't gotten directly involved in it. I was approached a year and a half ago to come in and weigh in on it, but at being an off-Cape resident and, you know, my focus on this, I decided that at that time, you know, it was probably best left to the experts down here. Since then, you know, I have, you know, thought longer about it. What NSTAR is doing, if they have a range of pesticides that they're using, and they're using a mixture of pesticides. Roundup, glyphosate was one of the big ones. Roundup doesn't work anymore. Glyphosate is a, it doesn't work. We've, it's the second-largest used chemical in the world. So we have tremendous resistance to it. So the only way we can make glyphosate work is to add other materials to it to make it stronger, to make it like it used to be 25 years ago. The problem is, all of this stuff that we're adding to it, nobody's ever tested that formulation. Roundup was sold to us as the safe weed killer because you put it on the vegetation, it translocates down, gets into the roots, kills the roots, and then goes away. Actually, modern science has now shown that as it gets down into the soil, the breakdown product of glyphosate in that soil environment with organic acids is worse than the glyphosate itself. So there is a lingering effect. You have this residual toxicity of a tertiary breakdown product. So, you know, I mean, I could direct you to the homepage websites of Sygenta, Dow, Monsanto, and every one. I did it the other day. We are the sustainable corporation for the future of the world. So it's all about selling product. When you understand preemption, preemption came to Massachusetts in 1995, and it came to the other 39 states in the mid-'90s. Do you know who brought preemption to Massachusetts? Chemical companies, the chemical lawn care industry. So the chemical companies sent lobbyists to all 50 states to get preemption so that in no way could local home rule ever cut into that revenue model for the sale of pesticides. So now we're faced with legislation that was put upon us by an industry solely for the benefit of reaping profits. So when you know that that might, I mean, ultimately, where you have to go is state preempts, you know, state can trump federal in certain situations. So if Caldwell, the Massachusetts, decided to repeal preemption, all of a sudden here on the Cape, you can say, "Huh, we don't want this anymore." But we're not there. And that's a tough fight. That is, that's not an easy fight. So the idea of cutting one year and pesticides the next and cutting pesticides, you know, back and forth, it's an easier way out. It's a strategy that is sort of appeasing because you're not just going spray, spray, spray. But the fact is that I don't care whether it's every other year or once every three years or once every four years, when you're putting that volume of active ingredient down that it takes, I mean, NSTAR crosses, crisscrosses all over the Cape. It's a huge impact, you know, to the home model.
Right.
That would shoot me.
Well, I just have a couple of questions. One is, in the work that you've been doing in your association with some of the universities or other states or communities, has anyone ever looked at what the impact of a systemized, what is, what do you call it, a systems approach to turf management? What that impact might be on the overall reduction of nitrogen? Would contribute to that reduction?
We have, I mean, there have been no, because this is all, I mean, this is emerging and, you know, we're talking, you know, recent history, you know, the last five to eight years. There is work that's now going to be done. The problem is that the industry that I represent doesn't have the deep pockets that the conventional industry has. So, you know, I mean, I can tell you stories about land grants asking me to do programs but then having them kiboshed because a particular industry didn't want the discussion of organics in the ivory-covered walls. So, you know, we have that. So we don't have the money to privately fund a lot of this research. But what we do, I mean, and I'm the first to admit that if a program is natural or organic, nitrogen can be just as big of a problem. And you heard me refer to reducing inputs and low-dose fertility and all of that. Critical because you can take the best organic fertilizer in the world, and if you use it willy-nilly and put down too much, you've got nutrients, nitrogen, you've got a huge problem. So all of what we do, building this systems approach, is basically trying to come at these systems with half the nitrogen that a conventional program would, and we're sourcing it in other ways that are really low, low, low dose. So critically important.
No, well, no. I asked the question only because we are also involved in wastewater planning, that it behooves us to take a look at this on a take-away basis because maybe we won't have to do as much in reducing nitrogen as we would if we don't do that. My, my second thought was that boards of health have very broad powers, as you know, and every town has a board of health, and that's a great place to start in terms of regulations, if you will. Have you worked with boards of health in the past on this?
Oh, sure. My, 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 my was the board of health.
And how were they able to help create such a regulation, if you will, or a requirement that this is what we want homeowners to do?
They addressed this as a public health issue, and therefore they approached it from the perspective of a health regulation to protect public health. And the regulation was actually drafted by an attorney so that it would stand up to challenges because, as you say, boards of health have broad powers. I address different public entities around the country. I flew in from Highland Park, Illinois, and, you know, and... I flew in from Highland Park, Illinois, and, you know, and we're doing that out there. I address their park commission, and there's been huge public forum on pesticide use, and I've addressed boards of health. So, you know, and because that is a logical starting point. So, in some cases, it's a board of selectmen, or it's a city council. Other cases, it's a, it's a board of health. Each of them has their own unique powers, as you know.
The reason I bring up the other part about the nitrogen reduction overall, is that I think a lot of homeowners who are looking at this whole problem of wastewater and what we're going to have to do to lower the nitrogen in our basements and estuaries, is that if they had an incentive on their own that they could use that would help reduce the need for the huge costs that I'm sure some of them will have to bear over the coming years, that that would be a great incentive, I would think, at least on the Cape, to encourage homeowners to follow this path, so that in the long run, it may in fact reduce the costs that they would have to bear as individual property owners on the whole nitrogen reduction.
Now, the one thing I want to piggyback on that is that you brought up an interesting point, where you're changing the premise from plant to soil management. That seems to be the key to all of this. And it appears that the incentive for a, let's say, for a property owner, would be indeed to address the basis of, let's say, his plant system or their plant system, and that seems to be the, the key to providing what I would call a pathway to, you know, let's say, to a sustainable solution. Would you agree?
Very perceptive. I mean, you, you grabbed it right there, and that's where you can bring costs under control, because you only have to do that once. See, unlike dealing with the plant, see, I mean, I was a plant grower, so I would go into my greenhouse, and I would take, you know, a plant, and I'd put it into a potting soil. And, you know, we all know that you get potting soils, you know, you know, one bag that's really heavy, and that's got topsoil or compost, one bag that's really light, that's what they call a soilless or an artificial mix. So, for, you know, for the greenhouse, that just became a functional medium to hold the plant upright in the pot. And I controlled everything in the early days with just injecting nitrogen into it, boom, boom, boom. And I could, no matter, I could tell you how many ppm of N I injected, how fast the plant would grow. So, when you have a conventional system in a lawn, that's basically what's happening. The soil becomes the placeholder for the plant. So, you have to continually do it, do it, do it, do it. When you address the soils up front in that first two years of transition, you do it once and only once, and that's what allows you to put that framework in place to have that system be able to readily accept those lower-dose inputs over time, and then that translates into saving money.
You, if I can also, could I just, could I just follow up on one thing, and then I could let Patty say? But just to let you know, what we've done here is, like, with our public health department, you know, many times, we've asked our director about this issue, and, you know, he does testing of people's wells and this sort of thing, and this hasn't really been an issue. However, his instrumentation isn't what it could be. So, this year, in this past budget, we improved, we gave their-
I think, I thought we addressed that issue.
We did. We addressed it in just this year, in this budget year that is just passing, in 2010's budget, where he was able to, you know, we increased his budget to improve, you know, to, to make it more sophisticated instrumentation, so that we can then have that data to be able to say, yes, it is there, and this is what we need to do. Also, in our study, we're not just looking at pesticide, we're looking also at the fertilizers and the nitrogen, because we are doing wastewater work in conjunction.
Sorry, I have to look at the whole thing.
Patty, did you want to weigh in here? I'm sorry.
Sorry. Back through the chair. I was just going to mention that we're doing this survey of fertilizer and pesticides are used by user group with a couple of goals. One is to establish best management practices, to support public education, and then finally to establish a benchmark, so we can set goals for reducing overall use of those materials on the Cape in general.
I think the best insight that I've heard today, though, is the, is the fact that we have to change a major premise going forward, and rather than dealing with outcomes, which would be plant management, we have to deal with the foundation to change that. And I think that one of the things that I've gotten out of this is that if we are to provide an incentive for the population, which is the intent of that study, to see where we are with regard to how far we are down the path, is to point out that all of us can deal with, you know, with what we have in terms of a foundation by making, you know, some effort to change that. I'm reminded that when I, you know, when I was growing up, my grandfather had turned a vacant lot into essentially a garden, and it was all a matter of introducing things on a, you know, it's a target basis in order to improve the quality of the soil. And through that, you know, we were able to have a sustainable garden for, you know, for many, many years, because you, I, I never knew that there were artificial fertilizers, you know, sixty years ago. You know, even if we found it, they're usually horses and so forth, and that is another story. But in any case, it is the soil. Jerry, you had a question?
On my mind are the kind of fringe areas that aren't cultivated, and some of the sideways, where I live, on the north of, just kind of bamboo, whatever it is, it's been, it's been tall and greedy, and there's no way to stop it, and you're not going to plow and fix the earth along the roadside. What can you do with, and they're all over now, they're growing over the NSTAR property, and they just spread like crazy.
It's, it's an awful, let me jump in here, because at the National Association of County Officials, the question of roadside management with regard to use of, you know, let's say, a chemical-based strategy, I had questioned that twice. Once in the, in the spring, and I only get, able to get three people to support it, and in the summer, I got sixteen people to support it, and the comment from my good friends from the Wyoming counties were, oh, if they follow the directions in the label, they won't, you know, you know, we won't have a problem. And I said, but you're still introducing chemistry into the water table by, you know, by putting, you know, direct input. And there is legislation right now to support that, you know, trying to get past the Clean Water, you know, the Clean Water Act and EPA. So, you know, this is not a problem for just Cape Cod. This is a problem that, you know, that I think we need to address, that, you know, the problem with hormonal changes, you know, with regard to, you know, for young girls. It's been brought up and it's reported on in the paper. It is a disgrace that we're not doing more about that part of it. So, hopefully, by, you know, by this process, more people will be, you know, be aware of this, and we certainly, I certainly would encourage you to, you know, to bring this message directly to the towns who do have direct oversight. I believe the town of Barnstable has taken some positive steps with regard to eliminating the, you know, pesticide use on, you know, on property that they own, and I think that, you know, that is indeed a good example.
And you're all exactly right, that, you know, it's an educational thing to the homeowner, and that's it. And, you know, to that end, I mean, I would, and what I think would be, you know, extremely beneficial in that, because that's the piece of the puzzle that's going to take that fifty percent and reduce it and take it off the table. So, we talked about NSTAR is this, and the public sector is this, and the homeowner is this, and the homeowner's a big chunk, and we all realize that. I would welcome the opportunity to work hand-in-hand with UMass Cooperative Extension and develop, because if they threw their weight behind this, and UMass Extension said this is the way to go, and bring homeowner educational, you know, I know Mary Owen at, at Extension out in Amherst has, you know, developed a couple of homeowner, you know, organic outreach programs, and I don't know how much more than developed, but, you know, if we could involve UMass Extension here on the Cape to begin to embrace alternative strategies and, and not necessarily always hold to that conventional, you know, mentality, or if it comes from funding reasons, but because so much of what a homeowner hears that comes out of any university becomes gospel, and if they say, you're, but that, I mean, we, you see, building a collaboration, I guess, to come up with an educational model to reach out to the citizens, and, and getting anybody that we could get together to help, because that really is, you know, sure, we can, you know, reduce, and the idea of this policy or regulation in all the individual towns is to let the town lead by example, but then it, leading by example means that, means that there's some educational outreach that has to happen. So, how, you know, we could basically, you know, thoughtfully, collaboratively, at, at some level, bring in this tools to disseminate this education to the homeowner and say, look, we really do have to look at this issue, because, yeah, even though it's all on the pallets at Home Depot, that might not be the best stuff for the future of Cape Cod. And my experience around the country is, once people see that slide that says it takes five ton of petroleum to make one ton of fertilizer, they have no idea. You know, they're all going, you know, they go out and buy a Prius to cut down on the petroleum, and then they find out that one out of every five units of petroleum goes for fertilizer, all of a sudden, they think differently. Or when they hear that about, you know, the endocrine disruption issue, or the inert ingredients are never tested, or those kinds of things that become contaminants, they're usually very receptive into, you know, undertaking the opportunity to explore alternative strategies. So, you're exactly, you're all exactly right. That is the piece of the puzzle.
I believe that we've made a good first step here.
I think.
And I, and I think you know that the Cape Cod Commission, which is part of, you know, regional government here, is, you know, is making every effort to, let's say, to set a benchmark with regard to where we are beginning, you know, to identify what the population of, let's say, of these kinds of materials are, you know, are present here. The fact that we've, you know, that we've indicated that there needs to be a change in the major premise, I believe is a start to this. Now, you know, we, we could be talking about this for the next several hours.
Right, right, right.
I would ask you to say, what would be the main takeaway that you would want the audience here and also that would be viewing this program, you know, to take away with regard to the next step?
I would think that, you know, as I said, like, right in the beginning, in sort of the executive summary of what I was going to cover, you know, I outlined issues and problems and strategies and outcomes. I would think the takeaway message would be that collectively, you know, as a population, we need to, number one, acknowledge that there's a problem. Number two, we need to say that there is a concern here with some of these materials that we have been using, in some cases liberally, and in some cases not, over the years, and that as, it's up to each one of us, with the, with the public sector taking the lead, to begin to educate ourselves about this material and then take strategies, because I firmly believe, and when you realize that it's, you know, World War II to today, that's not a whole lot of time in the big picture, it's a blip on the, on the screen, and you look at what has happened, I mean, and you, more than anyone here on the Cape, can experience it firsthand because of the, I mean, the military influence, all the influence that's affected groundwater. So, what we're looking at, the fact that in a society today now, and none of us ever say the chemicals, all chemicals are all bad all the time. Never say that. And any policies that you see that we will propose to you are always going to have exclusions in there for public health issue, if chemical intervention is necessary to protect the public health. But a weed's not public health. So, you know, we end up, and the takeaway message has to be that we live under a chemical cloud, we live under a, a program right now that we're, you know, polluting our groundwater. The, the human race is the only mammal that continually fouls its own nest, and we do that, and we've been long guilty of that, but when we look at what's happened in the last sixty years, what are we going to leave our great-grandchildren if we continue on this path without making modifications? And ten or fifteen years ago, I would never have stood in front of you and said that in all competence, we can now offer you strategies to make that happen. So, the, the final comment that I usually make is that in those areas where we can reduce and eliminate the negative impact that we are having, we should. It's not going to solve all the problems all the time, but if we can take one little aspect, like land management, and address the wrongs that we've done, and move it to a new paradigm that comes into a different strategy, then everybody benefits.
Actually, it's not a new strategy, because if you go back to Genesis-
Oh, no, yeah, no, I mean, new strategy in the scope of, of what's happened the last fifty years.
Right.
But like you said, with, with your, you know, vacant lot being a garden, all of the stuff that I talked about, that's what was always done in the old days. That's what, that, that's what it was. Our, you know, grandparents didn't have these products out there. So, what we're doing is just going back to that model that nature put in place, and we did, you know, we did pretty well under that model. It's just that, you know, the fact that as human race, and particularly as Americans, we're impatient. We want results yesterday, and these products that have been marketed to us do that, you know, they do that. You know, they make it get green in two days, they'll kill the weed in four, they'll alter something very quickly. So, it's sort of, that whole approach has fit into, you know, what our needs and, you know, what our expectations are, how what we've been used to, fast. And, you know, a natural approach, as you say, you know, you, you had a vacant lot, and you, you know, it was turned into a, you know, into a, it didn't happen overnight, but when it happened, it stayed that way, and it produced for years to come.
Well, the point I was making was the Genesis Saturn was given the responsibility of oversight for the birds of the air, and, you know, beasts of the sea and so forth. And so, that is a, a direct statement of responsibility to stewardship.
To stewardship.
Okay. So, with that, I think we have to move on. Sue, did you have something?
I could just add that Green Cape has arranged to have Chip Osborne do a natural turf management program. It's a day-long program at the town hall in Hyannis, and I think I've given each of you a program.
Yes.
It's free for municipal groundskeepers to learn this new, very old method of maintaining turf and lawns. So, it would go a long way, I think, if the commissioners would sort of give their imprimatur or-
Yes.
... recommendation to people that you meet from the towns to have their groundskeepers attend and learn this, this method of practice.
No, I definitely will, and I applaud that. And that was the other thing, that even though people might want to change their practices, there's not a lot of landscapers that practice totally in organics. So, to me, it's a whole other level of education that can be offered and that sort of thing. So, okay.
We're going to lose our-
You gotta go. Yeah, all right, so we have to get moving on. Mr. Osborne, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, don't walk out there.
Are Marbleheads raves online? Can we rub them online?
Yes, they are.
On their website?
Marblehead.org, board of health link, and it's a downloadable PDF.
We'll be checking all of that, and I'm-
They were very good, nice talking.
Do you have to go right now?
No.
Okay.
Okay. We need to vote to approve the previous meeting. There are two sets of minutes, and we also have the, the Needs Action. The eight twenty-five, that was the one we revised, I believe.
Yes. They're, they're in your folder, Pat has one in front of her.
I'll take a motion to approve the Needs Action.
I will make a motion to approve Needs Action.
Well, I just have a question on a couple of-
Sure.
Which ones? That's what, this, oh, are there seven actions we're talking about?
Right.
And number seven, I guess, number seven and eight, and I guess these have to do with the House of Corrections, and I wonder just why we were approving-
It's our House of Corrections.
Oh, and actually, it's the point, I'll have Carol reference, camera, reference that, so that it, to avoid confusion.
Okay.
See, it's our, the Health Department, I think, yes, I think it's a good point. Thank you.
And they get handicapped access, I think, in some cases.
Yep.
I just wanted to-
Absolutely. All right, there, there was a motion.
You made a motion.
Do you have seconds? Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll lose a favor.
Aye.
Okay, the, do you have any reports from, as far as activities?
Let me see.
Do you have any reports from Butch and Dylan?
Uh, yes. This week, I met with Senator Dan Wolf, David Willard, and myself. I met with Robert Pulster of the ICHH just to address the prevention monies that we had discussed. He was very informative in just, in telling us about how the state has gone, the different systems from home base to emergency assistant funds, how those are much more, you have to have certain protocol, you have to have certain conditions to get, to access emergency funds. Home base is a little bit more flexible. I think it was a very, without going into a lot of detail here, it was very productive for Senator Wolf to meet with Bob Pulster. They're very much on the same page. I think they understand where they can go forward, and some of it has to do with legislation and just tweaking the language, where we give more flexibility to act, to use the home base funds in a way that we feel on the Cape, as much we are very effective with them as far as prevention. So, it was a very fortuitous meeting. I think that things, things will go forward, and that the Senate will be very helpful on this, so I can give a better report and more detailed report that I will submit for next week.
Okay, so, the senators aware of the white paper that-
Yes, we, we brought all of that, I gave, we had the white paper. He has been given all of that information, and, and actually, you know, it's, it's, it really is a lot to do with language, and it's different areas, buying for what they want in different, you know, Boston feels more strongly that it has to be all EA funds, where the home base is a little bit more flexible, and that's the debate. So, there is going to be a supplemental monies coming in. It was passed yesterday.
That's the former fifty million dollar surplus?
Yes, and there's about six, six or seven million of that designated for homeless emergency funds, so we will be pursuing that.
There's, there's another piece to this. Housing authorities are facing a, was it, a lag between the amount of money that they're getting to support maintenance and other issues and having to reapply for it. They've taken away all of the reserves, you know, that we, that we had. And that's, you know, that is materially affecting the quality of the housing that we have. And I believe the paper this morning, you know, pointed out how the, how the inspection responsibility of, you know, housing authorities is, you know, is, is being affected by, you know, by, let's say, by lack of support, some of these things ongoing. So I applaud your, you know, supporting and keep us advised of that.
I will. And I'll give you a more detailed report on it.
Did you have anything else?
No, I just wanted to mention that the State Committee, I think it's Energy, is meeting tomorrow on wind siding.
So I had the Cape Cod Community College all day from like...
Actually, it's at 10:00 AM at the high school.
Oh, that's right. At the Barstool High School, 10 o'clock.
On the wind siding.
10 to 4.
Form legislation.
From 10 to 4.
That was canceled from another time.
It was. It was canceled. And then it was moved up to tomorrow. And then the Lyme Disease Task Force is meeting today at 2:00.
Yeah, 2:00. Yeah. A little bit of that.
Up the Hill.
Up the Hill. All right.
Are they meeting at the O or do they meeting over the...
No, they're meeting at the...
The former.
The former House of Corrections. At the Dome of the O.
Okay.
That's a long name.
That's very important. Okay. I don't really have anything...
Can I, if I may, just two issues. I made one change to your letter just because it said, it was like I, so I just said, we are. So, you know, I changed that. And then if you could just sign each of you, one of these blank pieces of paper, then I will have your electronic signature scanned so that we have it on file.
And I'll have to do it my best penmanship.
Give it your best.
My common method.
Your best penmanship. And then this will be your scanned signature.
Right.
Thank you. And then the only other thing, Phil, is I have the next meeting is, she probably night shots.
Well, thank you.
I'm impressed.
That's without my glasses.
Handwriting.
So basically what you can do and you try.
And then if you would just, the next meeting I have is November 2nd, unless I, if it's when we get that down. And then what we'd be bringing back, hopefully, if everything is ready, is the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group's proposed changes to our group health insurance.
Now, are these sections like 1920, or 2021, 22, do we have to adopt those or are they adopted?
No, it's, it, we don't have to...
It's a totally different for the county?
Yes. And so we'll get into that and what the recommendation is for, for us because we have very different contract language than any of the towns. So I'll go over all of that, but that will be on November 2nd.
On November 2nd.
Do we know what time it is, Phil, or...
Not yet.
No.
We don't know yet.
So we're not meeting next week?
That is, my, my understanding is you are not. You are meeting the first and thirds Wednesdays. So if there, if I am wrong, please correct me because...
Unless, unless there's some pressing need for us to meet next week, then we'll meet, the next meeting will be on November 2nd. Hearing none, so that will be the next meeting.
So then with that, then I wanted to, I don't know if it was taken blanket when you changed, when you altered your schedule, but would you vote to authorize Mark Zelinski or myself in his absence to execute, improve all commissioners' actions the week of, next week? I'll have to fill the blank. I'll lose that.
Any second.
Yeah, I, I guess, yeah, but we will see those.[1701.26]